October sixteenth, twenty twenty four at two twenty-three P. M. We typically start these meetings with a prayer reading or thought. And Gina Tanner will give us that. And then Rhett Williams will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear, kind, heavenly fathers, we come before the the beginning of this civic meeting. We give thanks for all those that in here and attendance. And those that are willing to sacrifice their time to serve the great citizens of Utah County. Heavenly father, we pray that the spirit will be with us as we look at the needs and the level of service that the citizens need. And that we discuss the matters that are presented before the Board of County Commissioners to vote. We pray that they will be able to hear the messages that are being shared with those that are here to present. And that they will be able to make decisions that will be for the benefit of both the employees as well as those who live in this great county. Heavenly father, we're grateful for all that we have, and we say it's the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Gina. Please stand. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Rhett. All right, our first item is a work session, our quarterly report from the Utah County Public Defenders Association. I think Ben's going to give us that.
Good afternoon. Benjamin Young, financial manager of Utah County Public Defender Association. This is the quarterly presentation for quarter three, twenty twenty-four. Just to to reiterate the values mission of Utah County Public Defender Association. And beginning with the juvenile court, this is the cases that were assigned. It's divided between those cases that are kept in the office and those that are conflicted out. So the upper portion is those that are kept in the office. Again, divided between delinquency and child welfare. One hundred and twenty new cases were assigned, seventy-five were closed, there's three hundred and sixty-seven pending. With an average case per attorney of one hundred and twenty-two. On the child welfare side, seventy cases assigned, sixty-one closed, two hundred and seventeen open with an average case size of thirty-six. Divided across the six attorneys. And then the remainder of the cases that were assigned to us were conflicted out. Delinquency, thirty-two new cases and child welfare, seventy-nine new cases. Pending any questions on juvenile, I'll pass it to Josh to discuss district court.
Questions on juvenile?
So we, the last time we presented was, I think.
We know who you are, but you better let.
Josh Eslin.
Thanks, Josh.
Chief counsel, Public Defender's Office, thanks. Last time, I think we reported maybe two weeks or three weeks before the end of quarter two. So we've included the quarter two numbers. So if you look and see there were five hundred and sixty-two felonies that we were appointed to in quarter two. Three hundred and twenty-two misdemeanors, and there were three hundred and thirty-six orders to show cause. Twenty-one appeals in that quarter as well. And then five hundred and forty-seven felonies in Q. In quarter three, three hundred and thirty misdemeanors, four hundred and seventy orders to show cause. And eleven appeals. If you look down at the conflicts, there were seventy-six for the district courts. That's a combination felony misdemeanor, sixty-four in Q. Three. Five appeals were conflicted in the second quarter and two in quarter three. Total cases closed in district court, five hundred and nine during that timeframe. Pending cases, about four thousand two hundred and sixty-four pending matters. There's seven hundred and ninety-nine that are cases that have outstanding warrants, so we didn't include those in the pending matters. But those would be cases where if somebody has picked up on that warrant, work would have to be done at that point, too. And so taking the pending matters by the attorneys is about one hundred and forty-two per attorney and nine per appellate attorney as well. And if we go to the next slide. So this is just a looking back the last three years. And and some of these numbers, the court case type, that is information that's provided by the court. This is how the court keeps track of their filings. It's felony misdemeanor, misdemeanor DUI. They also have the filing count. So that's from the court. Appointed count would be cases that we opened that matched those court case types and then the percentage. One thing of note here as well is that the way that the court reports those numbers is a fiscal year. So it, so though it says twenty twenty-two, that would actually be July one of twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two. That those numbers are are for, and similarly down the line. So the the most recent would be July one of twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. You see that we were eighty-eight percent of the felonies filed, fifty percent of the misdemeanors, twenty-six percent of misdemeanor DUIs. For a total common combined percentage of sixty-five point seven-five. Any questions? On that?
I think we can see the change of leadership.
Yeah.
In action in that, in your report right there, right?
Yeah, I think that's.
And very interesting how really the twenty-three numbers have six months that, like you say, that July first overlap.
Right.
And the twenty-four true numbers really kick up.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Hi, well, Josh said to introduce myself. You don't know me. I'm Erin Bigler, I'm an LCSW, and I supervise the social work division for the district court at the Public Defender's Office. We work on an attorney referral basis along three service lines or tracks. So our statistics kind of reflect the services that we offer to clients and to the attorneys that we support. We pre-screen folks for competency to proceed to trial. So if an attorney says, hey, I'm seeing some red flags with this defendant. I think maybe he, this person has a severe mental illness, or I just don't understand what's going on. We have a staff of four full-time social workers. Three of us are fully licensed and one is still a graduate student who operates under the supervision of our license. But we will go and conduct a mental health assessment in custody with the defendant. And then let an attorney know, yeah, I agree, he doesn't seem to meet the statutory requirements for competency. I think we need to go ahead and file a petition. Or you are right, I think this person might have a serious mental illness, but they're okay to proceed, so here's what we could do instead. We received a total of forty-five competence referrals. And we recommended filing on twenty-one, or just under about half of them. This is important for a couple of reasons. When the, when an attorney files competency of competency petition. Sorry, I keep getting tongue-tied. A competency petition. If that defendant is in custody, they cannot be released from jail during the pendency of their competency evaluation. Which can take several months. And if they're found to be incompetent, then the time that it might take for them to be restored, either in the jail or at the state hospital. Is just more time when their case is not moving forward. Everything's put on hold during that process. So what, what we aim to do is kind of increase efficiency by only filing on the people that we think really are not going to meet that criteria. And for everyone else, we've got a backup plan. This also matters because all of those evaluations cost money, right? Evaluators receive a flat evaluation rate of a thousand dollars per report. And they have, on average, forty-five days to see a defendant in custody before making their initial determination. So at Ben's request, I have determined that of the competency evaluations, we were able to essentially defer from petition. We saved fifteen thousand dollars by not having the initial evaluation done. Plus the additional cost of forty-five jail days per fifteen clients at sixty, at about sixty-one dollars a day. For a total savings of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Moving on to programs, this largely refers to substance use disorder treatment. So we're talking about addiction programs. Again, we are meeting with clients who are in custody and completing ASAM assessments. We're then making referrals to community partners throughout the state and coordinating release if they're granted. And transport to that program to ensure that the defendant makes it from point A to point B. And someone is walking them through the doors of a treatment program. This has seemed to really increase the success of their recovery efforts. They get a robust do not run away, or this will look bad for you in court pep talk, both before we leave and once we get there. And the things that I wanted to highlight here especially are that that pre-trial release. We are able to meet with clients as soon as we get the referral from attorneys and make sure that we're getting folks out of custody and into treatment as quickly as possible. By doing this in custody, we're, we're trying to safeguard against duplicative efforts with other community members like WASACH Behavioral Health, who is doing this on an outpatient basis. And we are assessing for goodness of fit, both for the co-occurring disorders, the substance use disorder and any mental health disorder that they might have. But we also have a pretty relentless focus on recidivism and are looking for criminogenic risk. And then referring to programs that will address all three of those things in tandem. Our goal is to have nobody come back. We have coordinated transport for folks who are also sentenced and then released to programs. So attorneys will close their legal file at sentencing. But if someone is sentenced with the condition of the possibility of early release to a residential program. We will track that client until a bed becomes available and then ensure that transport even post-sentence. In doing so, we have determined that, actually, this number is not going to be right at all. It would have been great for me to have gone through all of those post-sentencing transports and determine the number of jail time, jail beds saved in being able to get people released early from custody and moved to an appropriate treatment program. But I didn't have time for all fifty. So my paralegal gave me some info for three recent transports that we've done. We had one defendant who was sentenced to a hundred and eighty days, served eighteen. And then when the bed became available, we coordinated transport in that same fashion. So we've got three folks, the first saved a hundred and sixty-two days in jail. The second two both saved fifty-one days in jail. And again, at sixty-one dollars a day, that's a total savings of about sixteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. That's just for three defendants. And jail beds being open means lots of good things. Both that we're hoping to reduce recidivism and getting people to treatment. But it also allows the jail to sort of revisit their own budget and determine how else they might be able to use that funding. Whether it's for their own infrastructure or hiring, or even having open beds means they can take a contract with the feds or with the prison to house inmates in another way. The third sort of tier, other referrals, these are a little bit more challenging to quantify. These are mitigation referrals, serious felonies. They can include aggravated murder, sex offenses. We do this for a few reasons, both to enhance the efficiency of attorneys and because the CCJJ Sentencing Commission for the state encourages all of our district court judges to consider mitigating factors and aggravating factors at sentencing. But they can only consider what they know about, right? So we are hoping to provide a factual investigative mitigating fact sort of report to the court so that they can make a context-based proportionate decision at sentencing. Because these are hard to quantify, I'll give you some qualitative data and I'll try to make it brief. I'll just use one recent example because it came up at the county tax night, too. And I was really pleased to be able to say hi to the sheriff and chief deputy Higley and pass along my kudos to the jail staff. We have a client who has some serious medical needs and is in custody currently. And so the attorney of that, you know, on that case thought it might be prudent to argue for this person to be released because they needed to receive medical care in the community. I got that defendant's medical records and reviewed them, hundreds of pages, took a minute to annotate. But actually determined that the care they were receiving in the jail was excellent. In some ways, maybe better than I receive in the community, right? At one point, a guard and a provider had stood and answered this person's questions for ninety minutes. I don't know that I I've ever spent ninety minutes with a doctor. So I was able to go back to the attorney and say like, it was a good idea and I see how you got there. But if we didn't have social workers who were able to do sort of this behind-the-scenes work in supporting, you know, attorneys' efforts in their work product. We might have needed to hire a medical physician or a doc, a medical doctor, right? At the cost of four to six hundred dollars an hour, just to turn around and say like, nope, they're all good here. You'll need to come up with something else. So that's just one I, one example of how we help. Do you have any questions about what we do?
Any questions for Erin?
Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
Moving forward to the financial portion of our presentation. Again, as usual, the the finances are divided into three categories. First category is employee-related expenses. Second category, program expenses is defense-related expenses. So those would be conflict attorneys, experts, witnesses, things, things that are directly related to court costs. And then general administrative is all the overhead expenses, which again, we try to to minimize and to take the money and spend it for program-related expenses to to maximize the use of the limited budget that we have. So on the next slide is the employee-related expenses. The one thing to highlight here, it appears that we're under budget. It's actually on budget, it's just a timing where there was an amendment to our budget for salary increases in Q. Three and Q. Four. The entire amount was given to us in Q. Three, so that's showing up in the budget right now. That'll be spent in Q. Four. Like I said, we're on track for for where we should be for the end of the fiscal year to to be on target to the budget. Moving on to program expenses, defense resources. This is back on budget, thanks to the increase that the commission gave us in in July. That, like I said, puts puts us within one percent of of actual expenses based on that that increase to the budget. So that was critically needed and greatly appreciated for that adjustment, based on the increased caseload. And then on the final section, general and administrative expenses. I think this shows us over budget. I think the only item here that's kind of an anomaly is insurance, where that's paid for the full year. The budget's only reflecting three-quarters of the year budget. So we will be on track by the end of the year. Once that the budget fills for the rest of the quarter four. So that's the details of of the finances and the the categories that we report. Are there any questions in in those three categories? Then that will conclude our brief. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks, Benjamin.
Uh huh.
I'm sure you guys taking time to do that. Okay. Moving along our consent agenda, are there any items on consent that any of the commissioners would like to hold of those twenty-three?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Okay, so we'll pull item fifteen, any others off of consent? All right. And we'll go through the regular agenda and and any items you'd like to hold, let me know. We'll start with one through ten, item six.
And five for me.
And five.
And then we had a request to strike regular agenda, item four. It's a duplicate that got encompassed in item thirteen, so we don't need that one anymore. And then we can strike regular item number eight. We'll put that on at a later date.
Okay. And then just noting that item seven is Commissioner Beltran. Just make sure that.
That's for light authority.
Oh, sorry, consent item eight.
Consent item eight. So we're good on regular. You didn't want to point you. You were like, great, if I don't get a point for the weed board, you know?
We're striking eight on the consent.
The Chargers.
Yes.
Wait, are we striking or just?
Tableting.
We, we can strike it, I'll put it back on the agenda when it's time.
Okay.
Okay, so striking.
So regular agenda eight.
And regular agenda eight is okay with the name of Commissioner Skyler Beltran. No jokes about weed control, Snoop Dogg. Okay, we're okay?
Everyone's favorite grandpa.
Everybody's good, okay. Any others? We're going to strike the foreclosed session. Okay? You got all that, Jolynn?
Okay, on the consent agenda, we will be striking number eight and holding number fifteen. On the regular agenda, we will be striking number four because it is a duplicate. We will hold number five and number six. As for closed meetings, we will be striking number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Okay. So item fifteen, Richard Nielsen, so. This was on consent to approve or deny the request to waive the event permit fees and reduce the insurance requirement?
Yep, we had a request from Mr. Richard Thurman, who represents the Utah Valley Arts Board of Directors. They're doing, it's called an Epiphany Banquet and Ball, it's in January in the in the courthouse. And what they're requesting is to to waive the the fee for the event and to reduce the insurance amount to a one million dollar cap for that event, so.
Has this, has this applicant been here before?
I don't believe they have, I'm not aware of it, no.
Okay.
And is it Richard common for us to waive this fee?
Occasionally, it it's it's up to the the commission whether you do it. We typically get several of these during the year for different events, different facilities. So it's not an uncommon request. I just don't think we've had this one before, so.
Is that, is that nonprofit, five oh one C. Three, community-based?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, the application said they're five oh one C. Three.
Okay.
Will us having the building open incur any additional costs?
We'd have a little bit in in utilities, but it'd be minimal.
Just minimal utility, not like personnel costs?
Cleaning or?
Usually what they'd have to, if it's after hours, they would have to work with the sheriff's office on the security as well. Cleaning, cleaning, they take care of themselves. The the people that use the building would do that, so.
So it's, but it won't cost us an additional personnel costs?
Do we have a master list of those that we donate space to every year? Like they're here every single year? And we have to approve that? I know they did that at the city level.
We we haven't, we haven't done it on a master list like that. I'm I'm sure we could create one. We do have some that that come around recurring. We could probably create that, but we haven't done that in the past.
Can you think of some that I'm thinking of?
Like the Freedom Festival?
Yeah, there's been, there's been, and that, and that one, we actually do by by agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
So rather than on a request like this, so.
And then there's like the the DFW and the veterans that do several events that we donate to.
And and we've worked with like the extension on like farm field days up at the Equestrian Center and things like that, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, I I came in opposing this, but you say there's no additional cost. I feel there is some unrealized cost that we don't, we may not see. There just is, there's always an issue, there's always a need. So maybe I'm good with half and charging them a discount. I have no problem with the insurance reduction. I don't want to open a can of, we just let anyone use it anytime for anything. And I don't want to put it on us to decide who gets, who gets it for free, who doesn't. I'd be more in favor of some sort of charge just for policy's sake.
When does this event take place?
January fourth and twenty-five.
Okay.
Just after the first year.
I mean, if we were going to do one for the nonprofit, I feel that, I mean, these are public buildings and they are paid for and maintained using public costs. And for nonprofits, particularly a profit like an art board that serves the community, I could see there being like a very nominal fee, like a hundred dollars. But just then there's a a nominal fee that it's an amount that would more than cover our costs, something like that.
Yeah, that's great. And and I don't, you know, blanket to me as a concern, there may be events, activities, things that maybe don't align with our values or our policies. And the lower and the more open we allow that, then we must allow it to everyone and everything. So some sort of protection. But I I agree with Commissioner Garner, I I'm okay with some smaller nominal fee. I think it's eighteen or sixteen hundred, which seems high. But some sort of skin in the game I'd be in favor of.
And you know where I stand on the insurance? If the indemnity is roughly a little over three million governmental, you know, to lower them to one if something happens and we're on the hook for the extra two million. That's not being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. If you were to find a special event policy online, you probably could secure the additional liability insurance that they're asking to reduce it to for pretty close to between a hundred and two hundred bucks for the, is it just a one-day event?
Yes.
Yeah.
One day, you know, theeventhelper.com like would sell you a policy that would satisfy the county. And so you know where I'm at with insurance, but I also think that we've discussed like trying to find some common ground there.
Yeah, we're, we'll have a policy ready. We'll, we'll have the policy ready on the recommended insurance requirements within the next few weeks. That'll be finalized and submitted to you guys for approval.
Okay, so as far as recommendation kind of moving forward, and if we were looking to say, hey, we're willing to discount and and do something different, should we? Should we table that and get back to the applicant since their event's not until? I mean, we'd like to get it on the calendar, obviously.
And I think we've already got it calendared.
Okay.
For as far as scheduling the building. You know, I don't know what they are doing as far as if if that would cause them to hold on advertising their event or not, so.
Yeah.
And we should communicate that we're totally interested in hosting them, we're just hammering out the details.
Yeah, we can do that, so.
So a table until our next commission meeting be enough time? That's the thirtieth.
As far as the policy on the insurance, I think we're probably a little further out than.
Yeah, that that want to be a little further out, but you guys can.
I'm also fine moving this one forward.
As just a zero and then going.
Well, some sort of sat charge.
You want to do a hundred bucks?
Two fifty.
Oh, what do we got?
One fifty.
What if we got a one fifty, what if we got a one fifty out of two fifty? This is good.
I'll make motion to approve item number fifteen off the consent agenda, but with a price of a hundred and fifty dollars.
And you guys would need to make a finding that it's in the best interest of.
And that's because it's in the best interest of the community.
And does that?
As a nonprofit organization, arts community.
And does that include reduction on the insurance?
Yeah, that includes the reduction on the cost. And I just emailed Dan Herbert, telling him we need a bill of insurance, of insurance. And I CCG you on that email.
I mean, I'm okay with that.
So that we can fix this insurance gap once and for all for our insurance agent.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. Thanks, Richard.
Good job, team.
All right, so moving on, we are, item five, approved resolution. Excuse me, the. Uh, excuse me, the signing of an agreement with Utah Valley Convention Center, employee appreciation dinner.
And just a question, you don't have to get into it, Ezra. Um, I just am curious, do we take the funds for that from our sixty-dollar employee appreciation fund?
No, this is a separate line item that we budget out every year.
Oh, this is a general fund expenditure?
Uh, it's, it's in the admin service fund, uh, since all the departments are particip- are invited to participate, and so each of the departments pay into that. So it's the same fund, but it's a different line item. Yeah, so the sixty dollars is just for general recognition of employees as department heads or managers want to make those recognitions, and then this is the countywide event that we do every year.
Okay.
The last calculation I did is for every dollar that goes into admin services, about fifty-two cents goes into general fund because the vast majority of our employees are general fund employees.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was my question there. Um, I may also say I, I love employee engagement events and things. Um, I'd love for us to look at things that maybe, uh, capture more employees. Um, I see we anticipate three hundred employees, three hundred spouses or so. Um, I'd love for us to see if there's alternatives. I know we've done this forever and, and people probably greatly enjoy it. Um, but I'd love for us to spend some time and try and find something that captures more than three hundred employees. And I move to approve item five.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that passes. All right, Ezra, item six is the tentative budget.
We'll turn that over to Rod for that presentation.
Okay, we have been working with the departments, and I wanna extend a thank you to the departments we've worked with on, on their budgets. So thank you for the time you spent. Uh, there's more time to be spent, but most of it has been spent already, and I wanna thank our budget team for the good work that they've done, um, in getting everyone up to speed to where we are today. The budget that we were proposing as the tentative budget is one that we're comfortable with. If, if the world crashed and we needed to use this rather than the final budget, it would be good. It's good to go from that standpoint.
You're not predicting anything, I hope?
No, no, we are not predicting anything.
Rodney?
It's just a, a, a statement.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Just teasing you.
Um, so just some of the highlights from the budget, excluding transfers. So let's go to the next slide, and I have control, thank you. We're looking at a twelve percent increase in expenditures over twenty twenty-four. The first item on the transfers is something that we've been working on for the last several months. It's not something that we had talked about even as, as part of the tax increase, but I think it's good policy. We are looking at what does it cost to maintain our buildings, pay for the, the major systems inside that fail over time or that need to be maintained over time? And so the CIP committee came up with a formula that they use for current buildings under construction and saying, okay, if we're gonna fund those going forward and be prepared when the HVAC system fails to pay that, what do we need to do to put into the CIP so that's all covered? Um, it also includes the shell, replacing the shell of the ones under construction. Of the existing buildings, this covers internal systems, not the shells. So like this building, it would cover the internal systems. If we, and we have not had a history of programming CIP expenditures. We've done it as we've had money, which the CARES and ARPA money was real helpful in setting up. Um, but we need, do need to think about going forward, how do we fund this? This is a reasonable formula. We've looked at other cities and, and entities that, that budget this way. It's something, if we don't pay it now, we'll have to pay it tomorrow, so we may as well budget it so that we don't get hit with a major expense that we're not prepared to pay. So that's, that's the big item that, that wasn't, that's relatively new. Um, there's a transfer to health, the health fund of seven point eight million that's in the budget. Well, I have more de- a little bit more detail on a future side.
I would hope so, cuz that's, I mean, we did four point three million this year. If we assume a twelve percent increase, that's just over four point eight million, which means we're three million dollars too high on that.
Yes, and so it's an additional three million, and if you have detailed questions, we talked to Gina. I'll, I'll show a chart where there's.
I think they're preparing a, a, a chart. Well, you're preparing a budget for me that includes by program fund, right? Exciting.
Um, and then the transfer to the Children Justice Center, most of this is because of ARPA-funded people that they had, that, that funding's going away, and the service that they provide is extremely valuable. And we believe it's a, it's a very valuable service to the county and it's very helpful, so we're.
I have a question on that. Is there a chance that we can stick that in restricted because we only had to use ARPA because the VOKA grants went away? But pending on the outcome of the November election, those VOKA grants may come back. And if the VOKA grants were to come back, I would hate for us to have contractually agreed to a transfer of funds if they're not necessary.
Yeah, that, that can easily be done.
And we've not, we're not contractually agreeing to put that money in. There's actually five hundred thousand in unanticipated grant revenue that Rebecca's hoping to go after, which of course then would offset what you're looking at.
But even then, that wouldn't even account for the VOKA grants.
Do you wanna repeat that, Rod, since all the viewers at home can't hear Gina? You're good, okay.
Well, you didn't sit at the table there, too.
Sorry, Rod. Um, the idea would be that there is unanticipated grant revenue that Rebecca's gonna go after is as that unanticipated grant revenue comes in, that would offset what it is that the general fund would need to cover.
Yeah, but my, my concern is that the VOKA grant may even cover more than that.
Correct, correct. And there's an opportunity that, that in the past, um, usually general fund has put about eight hundred thousand to cover the difference. And then, uh, twenty twenty-four, we anticipated just under one point two million. So now we're talking about a one point eight difference, but we are looking at other revenues. Rebecca's on top of other app avenues to project, to see if she can get some additional funding.
Well, and Commissioner Garner is fine. She just wants it restricted, so we recoup it if we do get VOKA back or we do get the five hundred thousand in unanticipated grants.
Correct, so on the budget, on the budget, in order to put it into COFUS, we have to put it in as if we're anticipating to use it.
Yeah.
Then as we recognize those revenues, we will do a budget amendment that says, hey, we found new grants, we found new, new revenue sources. Now we're going to decrease that, so we'll address that as it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so on the personnel side, this includes salary benefits, new employees. We, we're seeing a ten point one percent increase. We have about a six per- six percent increase in the benefit side, the health care costs, so that covers a big portion of that. Another.
Rod, we're planning or in this tentative, we're absorbing all of that, correct?
Correct, so we budgeted a hundred percent of, of, of staffing plan, approved staffing plan. Um, we generally, I would say, I would say never spend a hundred percent. Um, something we're gonna look into next year is, let's look at the baseline and see what's reasonable to back off the salary when we budget, the salary benefits. Um, we need to do a little bit more homework on that before we get a reasonable recommendation. So next year's budget, baseline budget would be less.
Exactly, you were asking, do, with our increased cost, do the employees have an increased cost?
Correct.
So that would depend. If they have an HSA, if they have a high deductible HSA, then there is no cost to them because there's the high deductible HSA. For those of us that are not on the high deductible HSA, our costs do go up. But in, in this, yeah, in this case, it's actually significantly less than the industry standard.
Yeah, because of our contract, yeah.
Because of our contract.
Okay, answered the wrong question, thank you, Amelia. So sales tax growth, I don't, I have a slide later that'll go through this, but we're projecting three point one percent based on the projected twenty-two, twenty twenty-four revenues. And that, the, the next two revenues, we used an outside consultant who's an economist to help us come up with those, and we're actually using slightly more conservative numbers than we otherwise would because he has access to economic data, building permits, et cetera, and so he factors that into his recommendation to us. And we backed off our initial thoughts a little bit on the revenue side. So I'm very confident that there's a super, there's a prob- we, we obviously come in under revenue, planned revenue, but it's, it's not very likely. On the other hand, it is likely that we'll come in ahead of revenue, both on sales tax and property tax, and that's, that's the position that I wanna be in. I don't wanna be in the reverse of budgeting more revenue than we will likely get. So this is, we'll likely get this, I, and, and that's where we wanna be, and validated that with an outside consultant. Historically, sales tax growth has been between five and seven percent. We did have some outliers during COVID years, and we'll see that on a chart in a minute. Property tax, uh, again, we're budgeting lower than our historical average, uh, because of the, uh, economic forecast. And he, he says building permits are down from previous years, so. Um, hopefully, more optimistic than that, but anyway, there were that, there we are. So if we look at general fund surpluses and deficit over the last eight years or seven years, the blue is actual, the yellow is budgeted, like this year's budget, and then the twenty twenty-five tentative budget. You can see that we had a pretty big swing starting in twenty twenty, but, and then it decreased. The surplus decreased until we're now in the, the red zone, if you wanna call it that. That's just where we are. And, uh, again, twenty twenty-four, that's budgeted. We, we're not sure yet how we're gonna turn out. We're tracking revenues a little bit ahead of plan, so hopefully that negative won't be as negative. Um, now, this is the healthcare, the health department, uh, budgets, not actuals. But you can see in twenty twenty-three, we were, but we budgeted ten point one. Uh, we dropped that to seven point eight million last year, and, and it's popped back up. And the reason that, one of the reasons it popped back up is because some of the things that we thought were permanent were actually one-time with respect to staffing plans. So there is room in our discussions going forward to, to move the needle on that.
How much is in their fund balance?
Uh, right now is like five point nine.
But after the end of this year?
Budgeting use is gonna be.
Somewhere between two point five and three million?
Yeah, so five point nine is in there right now. They're projected to use, if they spend every dollar this year, three point one of that. So that's gonna leave them about two point six to look at for twenty twenty-five.
Gina, what, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Does that include, um, projected, is that budgeted or projected, assuming unused salary?
So that is budgeted at three point one. We know they're gonna have unused salary that's gonna go back to that. Yes.
But it'll probably be closer to five million.
Correct, but we have to go off of what's on budget, not at this point.
Okay.
That's another thing we also can look at for twenty twenty-five is where we know there is potential salary savings that we could project at some point to bring that number down, but.
Yeah, but we won't know till the end of the year, but assuming it'll be probably closer to five. And you said what, seven point three on that first page? And we should go up to four point eight, so we're looking at three point five, so would they still be okay?
Correct.
All right, sounds good.
And Gina, since we're on fund balance, what's our CIP fund balance? Do you have that on top of your head?
I do, off the top of my head, I closed that, but I can pull it back up for you really quick. I apologize, I should've kept this one open, too. Um, our CIP fund balance, um, beginning twenty twenty-four was ninety-three million, ninety-three point six. Um, spent to date, fourteen million of that, three point six is ARPA-funded. So that should, if we were saying right now was the end of the year, we would have eighty-two point nine million in our fund balance for capital.
How many projects do we have pending? Like, that's how much we have in actual, but how much of that is encumbered in projects?
In projects, all of it. So right now, if we were to say it's the end of the year, we have the exact amount of money we need to fund twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Which is our policy.
Except for the Public Works Building.
That doesn't fund. Oh, yeah, the Public Works Building.
Correct.
Okay, which is why we pushed it back.
So then that's, that's your, that's your variable is to, are we gonna bond for that or are we pushing it out?
Okay.
Okay.
That, good, thank you for that question, Amelia.
So I, I was really pleased when we had sufficient for the three years. Uh, I think that's awesome. And I also.
Without any change orders, so not happening.
But.
Well, we actually budgeted a contingency.
For change orders, yeah.
Um, so we, we believe we have sufficient, um, for the, the Public Works Building, we are, in my view, we're gonna have to bond on that one, cuz that's, it's too big of, of money to save for.
Unless Richard wanders the wilderness for forty years, and then we'll be okay with that, too. So either bond or, or wander the wilderness.
Put him on the Moses plan, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Hey, if Jesus wants it to happen, he will, he will provide a way.
Is, is the plan on that building a GO bond or, or a lease revenue bond?
That would be, I think that would be up to us.
That would be up to.
So that hasn't been decided.
Nothing's been decided yet. Um, it, it is permanently decided that if we wanna do it, we will have to bond. That's, I mean, it's just, that's.
We could get another, like, CARES grant dropped in our lap.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's possible. It's within the realm of possibilities.
It is, you're right. Of course, then we have deflation behind that.
It's true.
It could happen.
I don't know if this is the best plan, but.
Maybe we could wrap it into like the Olympic bid, and then we could get the federal government to pay for it as part of the Olympics.
Some kind of a.
Chris, the new attorney just popped his head up.
We'd have to put an ice rink in it, so.
See, I'm creative. All right, sorry.
All right, next, um, if you look at, uh, from twenty twenty on and take the, the property tax revenue that we've generated, that's been collected, and factor inflation in, uh, and add it up, uh, we've lost thirteen million dollars in purchasing power due to inflation. Uh, that's interesting. This, this is also, I find this interesting. If you look at property adjusted or inflation-adjusted property tax revenue, look at what the annual change is, look at population and the annual change on that, and you sum it up, from twenty to twenty-four, our, our actual tax dollars on the property tax side rose point two one percent. And we had a nearly twelve percent.
An inflation.
Uh, population growth, and population does drive all of our costs, not necessarily linearly. Some of them, I think, have a little bit of a curve to them. So there is, that gap exists and it's real. And our last one is, this is with respect to sales tax. The reason it's very difficult to predict it historically is because we have three years where there was this anomalous thirteen, twenty, and thirteen percent growth, and we couldn't have predicted that before, which is one of the reasons we engaged that economist. And we're looking at three percent growth next year on this, no, three point one percent, sorry, on the sales tax. This year, it looks like we're gonna land at four point one based on the economist's point of view, which is actually, is was pessimistic, but it's really close to our running twelve-month average.
Weren't we looking at four point five percent? Wasn't that in our estimate for the twenty twenty-four budget, anybody?
Yeah.
Originally, it was four point five. That's what I thought. So we're gonna, we're gonna come in just below that at four point one?
No, the current budgeted amount of sales tax revenue is fifty-one point seven. We're, we're almost certainly gonna be over fifty-three.
Maybe it was four, okay.
Uh, it was, it might've been four based on the budgeted amount for the previous year as opposed to the actual that came in.
Gotcha, okay, that would make sense.
So that, that's reasonable. So what we tried to do this, what we tried to do for twenty twenty-five is to base our three point one percent increase on where we think we're gonna land at the end of this year as opposed to what the budgeted number is. Cuz we, we're, we're virtually certain to exceed our budgeted revenue, which again, it's not a bad thing.
It's a sm- it's like a million bucks over, right?
Yeah, it's like a ma- it'll be about a million and a half over is where we're gonna land, which is a lot of money, but as a percentage, it's, and, and so it's with, it's the range that I'd prefer to be in. And our property tax revenue has some upside, too. Not that much, but, but some. Property tax represents about forty-two percent of the ca- of the general fund revenue. Sales tax is about thirty-seven point five. My notes here, yeah, it's thirty-seven. No, that's, the, if you go la- No, that's the, if you go last year, our property tax revenue was forty two percent of our budget. Our sales tax was thirty seven point two percent of the budget last year. So when we're asking for a X percent tax increase, you really need to say that doesn't represent the same amount of increase overall. It's, we're increasing forty percent of our budget by, let's say we were doubling it. Then you would really just be a fifty percent or take twenty, forty percent of that. And so that's, that's what we're really, that's how we're growing expenses, so. It's not as dire as some people say when you do a, we're doing a fifty percent tax increase. It's really like a four, um, a twenty percent tax increase.
Yeah, okay.
And that's it unless you have any more questions.
Maybe just run us through the nitty gritty of high level. From what I can see here, you're talking about a tentative budget deficit of twenty eight million.
Well, it's, if you exclude the proposed tax increase. So then it's three point three.
But essentially, you're saying in your tentative budget.
That we're going to run a deficit.
We're going to go to twenty five.
Right, we're going to go to twenty five.
Twenty five, and I still need three million, five hundred and seventy eight thousand and six hundred and twenty four dollars.
Yes, and there is upside on the revenue and we know we're not going to expend all our salary budget. So our, what we anticipate in, in reality happening is we'll be close to break even.
Say that, one more time.
In reality, at the end of the year, I expect to break even. We budget conservatively.
So you're thinking we'll budget for, like, with the entire tax increase, we would budget for an additional two point eight to three point five million deficit out of the general fu, I mean, out of the fund balance. But you think it will balance out at the end of the year?
I'm anticipating it balanced out.
Did your economist talk to you about what he feels the inflation rate will be like in twenty twenty five? Does he have any sense of that at all?
He does. And he did a, he had a presentation for us. I don't remember off the top of my head, my top of my head what that is, but.
My, the reason I'm asking, and I'll just tell you, how is it in comparison to the growth rate? Because we get into trouble and we get upside down when our inflation rate is higher than our growth rate. So I'm wondering if your economist gave you any indication of what, I, I'm assuming our growth rate will be somewhere between three and, three to three and a half percent. Does he feel inflation will be somewhere higher or lower than that number?
I don't remember. Rudy, do you remember?
And this doesn't affect the twenty twenty five budget, I'm just wondering for twenty twenty six and heading into the future. Knowing what our trajectory over the next three to five years looks like will depend heavily on how I vote on the final budget. So I'm wondering what we're looking like trending over the next three to five years.
He's anticipating the budget, that, that the inflation rate is going to be coming down a bit. I, I'll, I'll find the presentation and I'll get that over to you so you can look at it. Because I think that's really important, that's a very important question for you to have.
Yeah, because if he's, if he's anticipating that inflation will be lower than growth, then we will have some gap that fills itself over twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. If, or if he anticipates that inflation will be the same as growth, we're trending in a bad direction or lower than growth. It's a really bad direction.
Yeah, I mean, his, his inflation numbers, if, and just from memory, were projected to be in the three to four percent range is what I recall.
That was growth or inflation?
No, that's inflation rate.
Three to four percent for inflation, but we're looking at three to three and a half percent for, that's not a good scenario. Okay, thank you.
I'll have to, I'll have to get them.
Where's my Dr. Pepper?
I'll, I'll get that presentation and I'll get it over to you guys and we can talk about it.
We spoke about this, yes, Monday.
Yeah, that's very helpful, thank you, Rudy.
And it would be helpful for him to do the, do a presentation to you in an admin meeting, I think.
The high level, nitty gritty?
Yeah, those high level questions are good, do you have any others?
The nitty gritty?
Yeah.
How about you, Commissioner Beltran? Welcome.
Yeah.
To the party, I really appreciate staff and how much they really do. You know, Skylar and I had a conversation yesterday about the public doesn't see a lot of the behind the scenes and the hours that are spent hammering out the budget. And we really do appreciate your team being willing to work with us and help onboarding a new commissioner thrown into the fire, so.
And we gave you one meeting before we threw you in.
Fair, wasn't it? Yeah, so we anticipate that the final budget to be ready, probably in December, correct?
Correct, the, the planned vote on the final budget is December fourth. We do have a planned, uh, public hearing on the budget November twentieth. We, it's possible we could move that to December fourth. And if we had to move that to December fourth, then push the final vote to December eleventh. So there's a plan B available. But we finished the tentative budget two weeks ahead of the statutory deadline. So thanks, Gina. I don't know when you're going to get your sleep back or who's going to clean your house. Maybe Glenn to, to do a little extra on that side.
Fair enough.
They, I do appreciate all they've done and will continue to do. And, and we do want to support you as we move forward. And look at where, where we can shave or put pressure or, you know, refine the, the for, the revenue forecast further. I'm comfortable where the revenue forecasts are personally, and I don't know that I want to push that up a lot.
And that, that's a good segue for me in my comments. While I will say yes to this tentative budget as it's a logistical step and statutorily to move it forward. I will absolutely not support a twenty five million dollar tax increase and deficit spend. So putting that out there, that there's a lot of shaving that, that I'm working on. And Cindy's my budget analyst, she's wonderful, like, like Brandon said. And I, I think there is opportunities, but while this is a tentative budget, I don't want all of our awesome staff members to think that we're saying yes today to all of these things on the list. There's a lot of fine tuning that needs to happen. And I, I will absolutely not deficit spend into next year's budget on a planned budget basis. So I just want to put that caveat with my yes on the tentative budget.
Commissioners, can I make a quick comment related to that?
You may.
Thank you, I'm Rudy Livingston, used to be the budget manager, now I'm the chief deputy auditor. As we've discussed, th, this issue that you bring up about the deficit spending. Really what that deficit spending is, is we're using fund balance to start funding the replacement of our capital. So it's, it's really not for operations. It's really, the deficit relates one hundred percent to that capital number because we have never put any money toward, we do maintenance, but we've never put any money towards replacing our equipment. Uh, uh, our buildings and those kind of things. So that's really where it stands and that's really an appropriate use of fund balance, not for operations. It's for the capital plan.
Yeah, and I totally understand, like, if we remove the eight million in, in CIP, we could operate on a twenty million dollar increase and have no contribution to CIP, I get that.
I also think that's irresponsible.
Correct.
If we've looked at the industry standard, like, we are in the position we're in. We only have capital project money because the federal government plopped two hundred and forty million dollars in our lap. That is absolutely irresponsible and I think it would be irresponsible of us to put the county in that position again for political gain. Right, so where I do recognize what you're saying, I also think that it would be irrespons, like, who does, who, who doesn't budget for maintenance of their home? And then what, puts that on a credit card? Like, that's not how we function as individuals and I don't think it would be responsible that functions, so I totally, I totally agree with you.
Yeah. And, and to that note, the CIP committee will be, we're in the process of revising our pol, the policy and that will be coming to you within the, before the, hopefully in November. And the CIP plan for next year, for the next three years will also be on that, be brought to you in November.
On that note, I want to commend the CIP committee for recognizing this is something new that we implemented in what, twenty twenty one, late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty one? And you guys continue to refine and adjust and I really appreciate that. I mean, nothing is perfect the first time we do it, you guys have continued to adjust over the years. That's exactly how it should be done and you guys do a great job, so thank you.
And again, just to reiterate, I'm, I'm confident that even with this tentative as is, that we would end the year at about zero because of our policy that we have that we budget at full staffing. And we know we don't utilize all of that. And we budget conservative on the revenue side and there's a really good chance that we'll be higher on the conservative side. So I, I had a similar reaction to Skylar when I first saw it because it was just, let's do the right things here. And when it, when it came out, it was like, we can't, we can't do, we can't do a tax increase and then budget negative. And then Steph and I talked and I'm, I personally am very, very comfortable with it, so. But I had a similar reaction at first blush.
I think both are valid.
All right, any other things?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Anyone feel inclined to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget.
Okay.
I can.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody else have a headache? Just wondering.
Nope. Don't put that on me.
I'll, I'll absorb that for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission?
Quasi-public?
I'm not really general public, but there isn't, and this, and I'm not in the auditor's office, but regular item two. We didn't really discuss approve or deny the appeal of a personal property valuation. Do we have to take a, make a decision on that?
Yes, we do, well, well done.
By passing it, did we, does it say approve?
We actually have to, we have to comment approve and we do have to specify, even if it was on consent, we have to say approve on consent. I'm fine approving on consent, good catch.
So if, I don't know if you want any background, but this is a personal property account. Bimbo Bakery's.
Oh, I saw that.
They were taxing them on what they filed. So we're a little confused why there's this appeal. So, um, there is some question about the categorization of the assets, but we're a little confused why there's an appeal.
You've, you've reached out and they haven't responded or?
Well, they, we barely heard about this, this morning, we haven't really had a chance to get in contact with them, but we've read their documentation, it's not exactly clear what they're, why they're doing it. But anyway, we have to either approve or deny this, so.
And your recommendation is to deny?
Well, my recommendation is to deny because personal property valuation is self disclosed. So if use, if a business disclose, discloses their assets, why should they appeal what they're disclosing? But that's a philosophical kind of question, but if you want to approve it, just to tie it up.
What's the dollar amount?
It's quite a bit, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's a bakery, big, large bakery. I mean, it's not just a bakery on the street corner, it's like a.
Trust me, I'm well aware what bimbo is. Don't get a nickname like Gordo by not knowing.
He contributes to their tax bill.
Fairly.
You're a pastry connoisseur.
Well known, yeah.
Well, and I could see if they had a list of their personal property, but maybe forgot to depreciate it.
Yeah, that's, that's the real, the question is, they put some of their assets in a highly, a quickly depreciating category. When we, actually, they, when it was in the wrong category, so we put it in the correct category, so it doesn't depreciate as fast.
So is that maybe the dispute?
That, that, we think that's their dispute, we're not a hundred percent sure of that. But it's not uncommon for some businesses to put their equipment in a depreciating asset category and then we have to fix it and put it in the right category.
Because they're bakers, not accountants, so this may not be common for them.
They're big enough, they got accountants.
We're going to give them the benefit.
Could it be a case, Bert?
Anyway.
Could it be a case of if there's something permanently attached to the building for their baking needs? That may qualify as some, be classified as something separately, like a hood over their exhaust type thing versus.
I don't remember seeing anything like that.
Fryers.
You and they're often as well.
No, I saw that, their list.
Yeah.
But is that not maybe? I've heard people in the past say, hey, I filled out my paperwork, but then I didn't realize that putting my speakers that are permanently attached for my sound system on my reception center.
I don't, well, Paul Jones has his hand up, you may want to ask him, but we, we don't feel like there's really an issue of what they have, it's what category do you put them in?
Okay.
So.
So perhaps, okay, let me just ask if Chris is comfortable with Paul? Can I, can I take his question? Okay, Paul, Chris says you can talk.
Thank you, Chris. I was going to say, you could continue with the item.
Good idea.
Allow both groups to reach out to them and verify. I reviewed the material and I, I had questions about what they, what they were suggesting the value should be, so. I mean, even if you granted this, I'm not even sure we know what they're requesting, to be honest.
Okay, so let's just continue and then that way we have an open ended, we don't need to table it to a future said meeting, right? If we continue it, then when it gets on the next agenda, great. Okay. Good with that, to continue for two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I can.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue for two weeks, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Bert.
Yes, thank you, Bert.
Helping us out. All right, anyone else? Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon and other members of the commission. I have not yet had a chance to meet you, Commissioner Beltran, and congratulations on your appointment. I'm Soren Simonson, the executive director of the Jordan River Commission. And I'm here to just make a request for an opportunity to meet with the commission, either with each of you individually or together, maybe in a work session. We have missed having Utah County as part of the Jordan River Commission. That relationship ended in about twenty eighteen, shortly after I became the executive director and around the time Lehigh City joined the commission. There are lots of reasons, including the recent certification of the Jordan River Commission as the Jordan River Watershed Council. And our watershed includes much of Utah County and maybe all of Utah County. And we're interested in reestablishing that relationship. We have every other county and municipality that touches the Jordan River as members of our commission. And we know there's lots of work that is happening and, and I think we could improve our efforts collectively through a partnership that includes Utah County. And would love to explore what that partnership and maybe reestablishing your participation in the Jordan River Commission might look like. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself, especially to Commissioner Beltran. I also want to say congratulations on your work around the Jordan, or I'm sorry, the Provo River Delta. I know you'll have a grand opening of that project next week. And we're interested in continuing those same kinds of efforts further down the watershed, both around Utah Lake and the Jordan River inlet, across the Jordan River all the way to the Great Salt Lake. This connected system is really vital, both to people and to all of the other things that we share this place with, other living things. And we know that recreation and experiences and memories are created in these incredible natural resources. And so I welcome an opportunity to come and meet with you again, either again collectively or individually. And would love to explore renewing that partnership, thank you.
Thanks, Soren, if you'll maybe connect with Ezra, we might be able to find out how we can make that happen. We, I appreciate your emails that you've been including us on.
Yeah, we've tried to keep you in the loop at least, but we'd love to do more than that, thank you.
Appreciate that.
I happen to be here and so I thought I'd stop by your commission meeting.
Absolutely.
Fabulous to see all the work that you're doing and commend you for your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, Soren. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a final motion.
Move into adjourn.
I can.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.